Okay. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 14th, 2021. It's 10:00 a.m. We're here to conduct the regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everyone to stand, and Commissioner Martin will lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance to our flags.
Shall we bow? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this great nation that we live in. We ask you to please bless the leaders of this country. We ask you, as we continue the business of the county and the people of the community that we serve, that we do it in a rightful manner. We ask you to give us knowledge, wisdom, and patience with each other. In Christ's name, we ask all these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the EK Texans, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Commissioner Strate, Commissioner Martin, Commissioner Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the regular session of November 23rd. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners, you also have the minutes of November 30th, 2021, special session. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we have time for public testimony. All speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. And to those that are listening or watching online, you can go to huntcounty.net and go to the banner for comments and questions, and you can either put in a statement that can be read later in the court, to the court, or you can put a phone number, and we'll call you back at a time later in the meeting. Has anyone here wished to speak today? Being none, we'll move on to new business. Commissioners, you have the consent calendar. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Direction items, approval of accounts payable.
I'm making a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Making a motion to approve budget amendments.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval payroll personnel.
Making a motion to approve personnel. Payroll personnel, excuse me.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number one, do Daniel hurry leave?
He stepped out.
Do we have any fire protection agreement contracts? Anybody know? I haven't seen any. No, okay. All right. Being none, we'll go to number two. Presentation to be given by cofile to honor our past county clerk, Jennifer Lendenzweig. Stacy, you want to come forward? And how do we want to do this? You want to present it to the court or to the, to our county clerks? Why don't you give it to, give it to Becky?
Yes.
I think that'd be appropriate.
I just want to say thank you, judging commissioners, for allowing us to be here today, or allowing myself to present this as a token of our initiation, our service.
Your honor, I would like to say this. Is she on the line over there?
Oh, she is? Okay. Hi, Jennifer.
Hey, this is fantastic. For all the service that you've given this community, I think this is the right thing to do. And I tell you what, I appreciate Becky and I appreciate Stacy there taking care of it, but this is, this is something that you deserve, and I appreciate the judge and the commissioners allowing this to be done.
As for you, good morning. Can you read it?
Judge, may we give it to you before you can read what it says, please?
Well, let Becky read it.
All right.
It said, "Preservation of historical records is dedicated to the Hunt County and authorized by the Commissioners' Court. Bobby Stovall, County Judge; Mark Hutchins, Commissioner Precinct One; Randy Strate, Commissioner Precinct Two; Philip Martin, Commissioner Precinct Three; and Stephen Harrison, Commissioner Precinct Four; the honorable Jennifer Lendenzweig, Hunt County Clerk."
And then read the age for...
And the age of it says, "Thank you for your service," and then it's bookmarked Jennifer Lendenzweig.
Perfect. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. I'm honored that I got to kind of be a part of this presentation. I know all of the hard work and dedication you had over the years, being a retired clerk's daughter. Gone to all of the education and continuing education, so I'm just honored to be here, and we appreciate you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Bye. This is Jennifer. I'll be on my contact, and I'll, I'll ship this. I'll take it to the office, and we will package it up after, and we'll get this shipped to you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you all so much, and I apologize for sweating out.
Oh, you're good.
I have a 10-year-old, have a Christmas bag. If I miss it, I'll be in big trouble.
I'm new.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for helping us with this.
Thank you.
Okay. Action item number three, quarterly report for Boys and Girls Club of Northeast Texas.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Dean Jefferson, the club, for Boys and Girls Club, Greenville, Texas. First off, thank you all so much for having us here today. I just want to give a quarter three and a quarter four update for the year. Although school, as we know, it has changed, Boys and Girls Clubs are here to do whatever it takes to ensure that all kids have equal access to resources and opportunities to have a bright future. Your support helps us provide much-needed meals, school supplies, as well as virtual or in-person assistance from our well-trained mentors. The state of the clubs for quarter three, we had 11, 1,107 members. 280 was our average daily attendance, and we have seven clubs. In quarter four, we have reached a registered member count of 1,152, average daily attendance of 304, and we now have eight clubs. Our Boys and Girls Club, Northeast Texas, really seem to open a new chapter in our law. This time last year, we had an ADA of average daily attendance of only 26 kids. Now, in Greenville, we currently have an average daily attendance of 103 kids, reaching a peak last year, having 118 kids in the building, force the impact. Here in this city, we're serving every school inside the district besides LP1, of course, because those are two of them, and Greenville Christian School. We're partnered with Greenville ISD. They provide transportation to bring all the kids to the club from every school in the district. We're also partnered with connections to bring school kids from PTAA, and we just want to say thank you, because without your, your support, without your help, there's no way that we could be successful in helping the kids that need this look, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for what y'all do.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion for approval of the report.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item four, quarterly report of Northeast Texas Children's Museum. Charlene.
Well, good morning and Merry Christmas. It's about that time, but things continue to be very exciting at the Northeast Texas Children's Museum. In our third quarter, we had 8,453 visitors, and they come from 145 different communities. Our most exciting thing recently is opening our new area. We added an addition of 3,200 square feet to the children's museum, and this gives us 20,000 square feet of indoor play area for the children.
Wow.
Now, you're probably wondering, what did we put into that area? One of the, two new things coming in, and one is a Volkswagen car to teach car safety, and this was part of a grant from State Farm Insurance. But we bought a Volkswagen car, we brought it into the museum, and proceeded to take it apart. And the car talks to you, it tells different things to do, slow down at our car zones, school zones, school built for school zones, watch out for deer and wild horses and wolves, and so this place constantly has children getting to the car and working. Another new exhibit we have is a tunnel and slide exhibit, and this was sponsored by Heritage Land Company. And both of these exhibits were built and helped by Vosker Hovejak, who is an engineer who's also the husband of Nancy Komen, who is the State Farm Insurance. So he built the indoor climbing area by himself, made sure that it is completely enclosed, because it does have some height to it. But the children have really enjoyed this, and we are enjoying the additional plus. During the fall, along with our field trips, we also had our educational programs. We had a very successful preschool program, Healthy Kids from A to Z, which is sponsored by Caribou. We did STEM for third grade, and this was sponsored by the Commerce Road Club. We also are taking our Megalone, which is part of the tobacco grant from Hunt County up here. Our Megalone is eight feet tall and 13 feet wide, and it shows all the diseases a lung has, and we take this to fourth graders in Hunt County. On the more fun side, the children's museum sponsored a spooky night at the museum in October, and we had over 350 participants. And this came about because one time last summer, our lights went out, and we gave the kids a flashlight, and they had so much fun playing with the flashlights. So for our spooky night at the museum, we did the same thing. We turned the lights out, but it was a lot darker, and gave everybody the flashlight and ran the light. We also used our outdoor area and put smores outside for the kids, and so it was a really fun thing with the children. Now, the children's museum is looking forward to next year. The year 2022 will be our 20th year, and we've done a long way during those 20 years, and we appreciate your continued support and all the things and the additions and the growth that you have helped make possible. So it is getting close to Christmas, so Find a Child will be open every day except for Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and the weekend. So Find a Child, come visit the children's museum, and see all that we have to offer. And again, find a Christmas.
Thank you, Charlene. If anyone hadn't been over there, you need to go. It's, it's a fabulous place for the kids. Commissioners, entertain a motion to approve quarterly report.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Monthly Treasury Report for September 2022. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number six, the joint resolution for the March 1st, 2022 primary election. Morning.
Good morning. I'm about to get you with...
You want me to read it, or you want to read it?
Well, you can, and I'm about to get you with the copy of the joint resolution that has to be filed each primary by the party chairs and approved by the administrators board. Today, Larry Davis, Democratic Party Chair, is with us. They have both signed the resolution that she has prepared, and we're requesting the court's approval and signature. Would you like to...
I can. All right. Joint resolution. Whereas the Democratic Party of Hunt County, Texas, and Republican Party of Hunt County, Texas, desire to enter into a 2022 joint primary election services contract with Hunt County Election Administrator slash County Clerk as County Election Officer, and whereas the Commissioners' Court of Hunt County, Texas, desires to give authorization for said contract, now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Hunt County, Texas, that said Commissioners' Court authorize a joint contract by and among Larry P. Davis, Democratic Party Chair, and David Hale, Republican County Chair, and Jeanie Ash, County Election Officer of Hunt County, Texas, for the conduct and supervision of Hunt County joint primary election on March 1st, 2022, and Hunt County primary runoff election, if necessary, on May 24th, Any other comments, questions? Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jeanie. Doing a great job. Okay. Action item seven, a resolution authorizing votes to the Hunt County Appraisal Board of Directors, nominees. Commissioners, I think we nominated all of the current board members, and I'll make a motion that, we have 1,785 votes, and I'd make a motion that we give 600 votes to Tyson Cox, 400 votes to Mike Taylor, 300 to John Sands, 285 to Howard Wynn, 100 to Mitch Moore, and 100 to Paul Painter. In discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number eight, a letter in regards to Texas Department of Transportation, FYI 2022 Assistant Allotment for Hunt County. Commissioners, I got a letter from TechDOT, and they're giving us, are giving to each precinct 23,000 and some odd dollars' worth of material. They are asking that I write a letter asking, requesting that material be given to Hunt County Commissioners. So I'd entertain a motion for the approval of this, so I can sign that letter.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number nine, update to Commissioners on the Hunt County thoroughfare plan. I don't remember if we discussed it before, but we had a meeting with the Transportation Steering Committee last week, along with TechDOT and Freezing Nichols, and one of the things that, you know, I know we've talked about in the past, that we're working hard to get the engineering finished on 1570 in 1903, and we anticipate 1570 being completed in this, by this summer, and that we're going to, we're, we're going to want to go ahead and let the county buy and purchase the easements that are going to be necessary. A lot of these easements are just adding on to easements that are already there. There'll be a few new ones, but most of them are just making some of them larger. But at the meeting, we talked about it, and Freezing Nichols is almost complete with all of the easement locations, and we'll be sending those, probably already have sent them, they just lacked a little bit finishing it last week. They're going to send those easements to TechDOT, and they're going to have their right-of-way department look at it and give us their cost estimates for the acquisition of those tracks, and we will take them in our name. We won't have to do everything that TechDOT has to do according to their rules and regulations, but I'll be coming back as soon as we get an amount to get permission to pay for these easements, and we'll have to engage somebody. Daniel, I guess we'll have to do an RFQ for a relative or a right-of-way company to acquire these tracks for us.
Yeah, that would be RFQ.
Yeah, and so probably right after the first of the year, we'll probably be engaged in that, and then we'll have to talk about whether we're going to pay it, pay for all this out of our bond, transportation bond money, or if we want to take it out of capital improvements and fund it that way, if that's all right with the auditors. Either ways, I'll go to you. So I just want to give you an update, and hopefully, right after the first of the year, we'll come back with finalized information and ready to take action, because we need to acquire all of these before August. I think we're trying to let 1570 for construction, if we get all of it funded in this next, next cycle of letting of contracts with TechDOT. So that's just an update of what's going on there.
So the county will purchase the right-of-ways. Will we obtain them, or we, we turn them over to the state?
No, we'll hold them in our name. They'll be in our name. We may have to come back and do an interlocal agreement with TechDOT or something, but they want us to hold them. If we acquire them, they want us to hold them in, in our name, so they'll be in Hunt County's name. And action item number 10, update to Commissioners of County Courthouse Restoration. Window project, I've got Chris here in case you've got any other questions. No, because the window's in y'all's office and hasn't been totally completed, because we can't get the window that's in there back end exactly correct where it closes properly and all, and we're having a little trouble with the contractor of finalizing and making those final adjustments, and so I don't know if everybody remembers, when we started this project, there was another company that we really wanted to use, and the gentleman that owned it passed away in the middle of all of it, and then shortly thereafter, his wife passed away, and the son was working with him and for him, and he wasn't sure what he was going to do, and it's been now a year or so, and he's got the company, still got the same employees, and they're still in operation, and he is, he came out last week, I think it was, and has looked at doing another window for us, and he looked at the window that the other company did, and had some comments about the way it was done. Again, we're trying to find a way to be able to work, work or write a bid package, so we can get bids from somebody to restore windows, but till we can figure out exactly how we have to do that by the Historical Commission, that's kind of where we're at. Chris, you got any other comments? Am I going to miss something?
No, I think that's pretty well covered, because we talked, and if you're going to talk to show how good your work is, you think they do the best work they ever did on the market, and that's just not what the place you got to do. We're looking back at the company who started it.
Okay. So where, where do we stand with this company that come in and didn't complete the job?
Have we paid, have they sent us any? I don't remember seeing an invoice from them. Yeah, we haven't, they haven't invoiced us, so we haven't paid them anything yet, and we won't pay them until they complete it.
The thing about it is, they have to qualify for the Historical Society, don't they?
Yes.
Yes.
And there's only two or three companies that even do this. This is the trouble with the Historical Courthouse, and it had, we can't replace the windows. They have to refurbish them and reinstall them, or refurbish them in place, and that's kind of what we're trying to figure out, whether or not we can install them and take them somewhere, refurbish them and bring them back, and reinstall them, or if they have to do it in place, and the architect, I think, has had opinions both ways, and not sure. The other company, they took part of it away, I think, and restored part of it off-site, and then came back and restored part of it on the site, so we're trying, before we go out to bid, we're trying to make sure we got the right methodology and, and got approval so that we can keep the Historical Commission happy with us. Any other comments, questions? Okay. That's, we don't need anything on this. I just want to make sure everybody was aware of what's going on. I think they're doing it in Brian's office next time, or Steve's?
My office.
Okay. That's why I said you get for not being there, Steve.
Exactly. I will pin on them.
Don't do mine.
Okay. So we'll, we'll do it in Commissioner Harrison's. Action item number 11, we'll move to old business. Action item 12, well, we're going to do 12 through...
28, I think.
28.
Yes, sir.
All, well, it's actually, we skipped, we did one twice. I think there's one in there that's duplicated, 33.
It's a different.
It's a different location? Okay.
It's the same road, just a different area.
Okay. All right. So item, we're going, items 12 through 28 is a request to construct and, to construct and placement of fiber, which will consist of both underground and aerial attachment to existing poles on Hair Lane in Precinct 3, County Road 3114 through 3123, Precinct 3, County Road 3122 in Precinct 3, County Road 3123 in Precinct 3, 31, I'm out, County Road 3124, Precinct 3, County Road 3125 in Precinct 3, County Road 3126 in Precinct 3, County Road 3301 in Precinct 3, County Road 3302, Precinct 3, County Road 3303 in Precinct 3, County Road 3304 in Precinct 3, County Road 3305 in Precinct 3, County Road 3306 in Precinct 3, County Road 3306 in Precinct 3, County Road 3308 in Precinct 3, County Road 3309 in Precinct 3, and County Road 3343 in Precinct 3.
Your honor, I'm making a motion, we allow this construction to be done with the normal stipulations. In fact, they've already been called in reference to some of it. I do appreciate this, and I know the citizens like it.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So the public knows this spectrum is running fiber optic cable out into different areas of the county to provide high-speed internet to different sections of the county, so we're all excited that maybe we'll get better internet service to the citizens of Hunt County. Action item 29, upgrade of approximately 2897 feet of County Road 1074 from dirt to oil, sand, in Precinct 1, money is in escrow.
Judge, do you make a motion, we approve this upgrade?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 30, the upgrade of approximately 4,500 feet of County Road 1076 from rock to oil, sand, in Precinct 1, money is in escrow.
Judge, do you make a motion, we approve this upgrade?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 31, upgrade of approximately 3,960 feet of County Road 2602 from rock to oil, sand, in Precinct 2, money is in escrow.
Make a motion, we approve this upgrade on this road, and money is in escrow?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 32, the upgrade of approximately 443 feet of County Road 3212 from dirt to rock in Precinct 3, money is in escrow.
I'm making a motion, we allow this work to be done, money is in escrow.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 33, the upgrade of approximately 442 feet of County Road 4206 from rock to oil, sand, in Precinct 4, at county's expense.
Make a motion to approve this at county's expense?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 34, the upgrade of approximately 3,877 feet of County Road 4204 from, excuse me, from rock to oil, sand, in Precinct 4, at county's expense, instead of the 6,028 feet that was approved in action item number 17,061.
Yeah, this is just a correction from the action item 17,061. We're upgrading 3,877 feet of, of County Road 4204 at county's expense. That's a motion.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 35, the upgrade of approximately 5,644 feet of County Road 4205 from rock to oil, sand, in Precinct 4, at county's expense, instead of 3,833 feet, is approved in action item number 17,062.
Make a motion to approve this. Again, it's just a correction to action item 17,062.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 36, the naming of private drive in Precinct 4, Cha Cha Road, due to 911 addressing of three family residence structures to be using the same drive entrance. The drive is off State Highway 24 and will not be maintained by Hunt County, and property ID is 26422, being 5.381 acres. ID is 26422, being 5.381 acres. Nothing is being split. So, I guess they got three, same owner of three houses?
Yeah. I'm making a motion to approve the naming of this road in Precinct 4.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action Item Number 7, a public hearing, possibly take action on the replat of Lot 4 of Garfield Estates in Precinct 3. Brian, you got any comments before we open the public hearing, or?
This was, this replat actually was brought to all, looking so good a couple months ago, and it was denied due to some, the plating incorrect.
Technicalities?
Yeah. So, they have come back and fixed everything and it feels like they have a notice process of sending out with all the neighbors. So, these neighbors got another, another notice shortly after. This plaque does meet all of our subdivision regulations and copies of the original plaque and the restrictions that we don't enforce with anybody we talk to.
Okay, this time I'll open it up to a public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak in regards to this can come to the mic and give us their name and address. And Daniel, is anybody online that's commenting?
No, there's not.
Okay. Anybody here wish to speak? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners entertain a motion for the approval of the replat of Lot 4 of Garfield Estates in Precinct 3.
Show move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action Item Number 38, preliminary plaid of Magnolia Phases 10 and 11 in Precinct 2.
Make a motion, will you approve this?
Just outside of Josephine.
Yep.
Mark Hickman, our engineering representative, has reviewed the plans, has big looks in order. This is a continuation of a very large development over there that will cross the original Hunt County subdivision, the ETJ, Josephine, but this one is in, installed in Hunt County.
Yes. So, the public knows, 400 lots, D.R. Horton Development, is that correct?
The development, but the whole thing's huge.
Yeah.
You're right, you're very well considered.
Yeah, they've already been, built, they built a ton of houses already in Collin County side of it.
Collin County side's got a bunch, ETJ, they've got a bunch, they've got developmental schools going in, it's, it's huge.
Yeah. And I think they've already got a few lots in Hunt County out of that other development. But this is, this phase will be entirely in Hunt County, is that correct?
This will entirely be in Hunt County, they're getting run on, mud, the whole area's in mud, they did a lot of good things for Josephine, don't have to say, their system and all, it's a, you know, it's a big, big yard to develop, and that's what I've done it, like a, a big force, they bring a lot to the community.
I know in the pre-development meeting, we had requested that they help in improving the road back out to 6. I don't remember the county road number, but they were gonna, they'd already improved it, I think, in some section of it. But we had asked them to upgrade that road because the way that preliminary plaid, commissioners, if you looked at the plaid, they've really kind of got it where it's gonna all funnel out kind of just one exit to get on a county road to Collin County to go, and there's gonna, already a lot of traffic on that road. So, we know some of them are gonna go out our, the county, Hunt County road, and it's not in very good shape, and we asked them to improve it, and they said they would, but had they confirmed that to us?
No, I haven't gotten any further on that, trying to get the planes, the construction planes for the actual, the actual development going that's, that's in the subdivision. I will have more information on that before we go back to the firm.
Well, I think, Commissioner, I think, I wish, if we approve it, I think we should approve it with that condition that, that request be confirmed and make sure we know what they're gonna do. Because I think that's gonna put a lot of pressure on that road if we don't do something in.
What, what road does that come out on in reference to the county?
Six.
Highway 6?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's not that far, wouldn't it, like a quarter mile, half a mile to get to Highway 6 from this development? It wouldn't be very far. And they own all the land out to 6 anyway, or most all of it.
When we spoke, they were, they were willing to do the upgrade.
Yeah. They didn't bucket it all at meeting. I just want to make sure we get it of record with the condition and make sure that we do get it when the development starts. I don't, I don't want us to be responsible for that road.
Absolutely. Yeah, and it, right now, it's actually a, it's a good road. It's a flat road, but it's rock and it is dusty if you can. So, you get, you get some additional traffic out there, remember, there that may, it's gonna destroy.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve this with the condition that they do upgrade the county road out, yeah, the county road out to FM 6, to the north.
Bring it up to our county.
Our county specs, yes.
Full standard, hard surface, certain hours they choose.
Correct.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion, a second. Any discussions or questions? Not entertain, entertain, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I got lost, sorry. Action item 39, the final plaid of J&amp;L Property Investment Edition in Precinct 2. That's a one-lot subdivision?
One-lot deal on Highway 34. It's a, it's a best of lot.
Entertain a motion for approval?
Make a motion, will you approve the final plaid?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Daniel, still nobody online?
There's nobody online right now.
Okay. Any other, anybody else have anything to say to the court? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under numbers?
1, 2, and 4.
1, 2, and 4.
Show move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We'll go into executive session at 10:36. Thank y'all all for coming. Not that I'm aware of.
Should you turn this off, Judge?
Will, I'm in the process.